I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to our September 18th meeting. Please note the council is in full attendance. First thing on our agenda is items from council, and I have one item, but is there anything before we do that? Council, you want to bring up, or? Yes, sir.
Did the mosquito spray starting, started already?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. So the mosquito spraying started yesterday.
And they do three days to cover the town, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Good question. Thanks for bringing that up.
Mayor, if I can bring up one thing during items from council, council members, I gave each of you a substituted version of item D5 in order to just provide some clarification. The resolution said for the current year, and staff intended that to say for fiscal year 2018-2019. So when we get to that item, I will simply read the correct caption for that, and if there's no objection, we'll approve it as substituted. I'm bringing that up now in case someone wants to pull that item from the consent agenda. James is willing to answer questions about that tonight.
So we'll leave it on the consent. Okay. Okay, and we do have, is our fire chief around? There he is, Fire Chief Fox. We have a recognition this evening for our fire department, and we have a special guest here. So you come forward and introduce him and tell us about your recognition.
Sure, Mayor, members of council, good evening. It gives me great pleasure and honor to introduce Chief Skinner. He is the Fire Chief of the Saginaw Fire Department. He is also the South Region Director for the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. He'll be presenting the Victoria Fire Department with their best practices recognition status. And I'll turn it over to him. I won't steal any more of his thunder.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor, council, good evening. As Chief mentioned, my name is Dale Skinner. I am the South Region Director for the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. It gives me great pleasure to be here this evening to present the Victoria Fire Department this award. The Texas Fire Chiefs Association developed its best practices program to encourage fire departments across Texas to seek continual improvement in their service delivery to their communities. There are 12 chapters which define best practices in typical service areas provided by a fire department. This program is applicable to paid combination and volunteer fire departments. The Texas Fire Chiefs Best Practices Program requires departments to allow a third party to review department policy, policies and procedures compared to the performance requirements in the program. The Best Practices Program defines a pathway for organizational excellence, which ultimately enhances firefighter safety, long-term planning, standard operating guidelines, deployment analysis, risk management, and other administrative functions. While most communities believe their local fire department is excellent, elected officials, city managers, and fire chiefs and citizens can verify this belief by their fire department attaining the best practices recognition. As mentioned earlier, this is accomplished through independent third-party review to determine if an organization functions at a defined level of excellence. The Texas Fire Chiefs Association Best Practices Programs provided the Victoria Fire Department a pathway to push its level of service to a status of excellence that is validated by independent experts through document review and site visits. This designation demonstrates to the citizens of Victoria that your fire department is among the very best in the state of Texas. Victoria Fire Department joins only 17 fire departments across the state that has received this designation. Therefore, on behalf of the Texas Fire Chiefs Association, it is my pleasure to present Chief Fox and the Victoria Fire Department this plaque signifying their best practices recognition.
I'd like to recognize a few of our members, and maybe we can come up and take a photo, see? Chief Shannon Martin, Chief Michael Belt, Chief Lipton Byer. Also mentioned are Chief Jeff Cowan, Jeff David, Chief David Colick, Chief, battalion chief Roger Hempel was retired. We started this program a long time ago, and of course, Chief Tanner Drake. So I'd like to ask those guys to come up for this plaque presentation. Thank you. Mayor, council, city manager, thank you for letting us take this time to receive this award. We worked very hard on this in the past three years, and we're very proud of it. And we're proud to serve the community and bring this award home for them. And thank you to the men and women of the Victoria Fire Department who worked hard behind this. And Chief Skinner, thank you.
I just have one comment, Tracy. I believe we're the best department in the state, so.
No pressure.
You didn't say city department, did you? That's just clear.
The best department in the state. Oh, I'm sorry. Best fire department.
Well put. One of 17, so out of the whole state, so. Congratulations, guys, and thank you so much. I know the community is grateful, too, so thank you. A little inside competition.
Well, I think he caught me there with city. I think, so I've got 10 other department heads that are sitting out there wondering. So no, best fire department in the state.
No doubt, no doubt. Okay, so we're still into items from council. If anyone had anything at all? Okay, seeing none, we'll close items from council and move into citizens communication. So anyone who'd like to come forward, now's the time. Come on up and share whatever you want. Okay.
I'm Peggy Cunningham, and I want to take this opportunity to say, yes, we have the best fire department in the whole state of Texas. Best police department, sheriff's department, first responders are great in this city. And I had a very personal experience with them a couple of weeks ago. I had been to the doctor, and I recently moved in with my granddaughter, and I had to come downtown to the water department to change my address, and they wanted to see my driver's license and everything because I was going to have them deducted out of my account. And so I understand they're protecting me, but, so I went down there. And I haven't been out much anymore since Harvey and my arthritis have had a real time with me. So I just took my cane, went in the water department, got everything straightened out, came back out, started to walk to my car, and my cane hit a little drop-off about this far, and down I went. And I tell you what, when I hit, I didn't hit my head, but it sure did shake my brain. But immediately, I mean, within seconds, there was two policemen there, some people from the city. The lady from the water department came out and got water. There was, I don't know how many people around me, and they were asking me if I was okay, and they had called an ambulance, and I said, I don't think I'm hurt. But I was certainly embarrassed. But a man came by, and he said, what can I do to help? And one of the policemen said, bring us a chair that has rollers on it so we can get her out of this heat. So they took me back in the water department, and everybody kept saying, you know, where do you hurt? What can we do? Just, I couldn't believe how nice everyone was. The lady from the water department stayed right by me, and she kept patting me on the hand and saying, okay, honey, just calm down. It's going to be okay. The first responders got there, the EMT, the ambulance came. And so they said, they took my vitals, and they said, well, everything looks good. Can you walk? And I said, I don't know. And they said, well, can you stand up? And I said, I don't know. I said, I was picked up and put in this chair, and I haven't had an opportunity. And they said, well, let's see if you can stand up. So I stood up. They said, can you walk? And I said, I don't know, but I'll try. Well, I was able to walk, and they said, well, do you want us to take you to the hospital? And I said, I don't think that's necessary. I just need to get to my car and go home and change clothes because I got slightly dirty when I fell on the pavement. And I said, but I think I'll be all right. Are you sure? And I said, yes, I'm sure. Well, there was a man from the city came up, and he said, Ms. Cunningham, and I'm sorry, I didn't get anybody's names. If they told me, it went south. But anyway, he said, if you need anything, or if you discover that you really are hurt, you call me immediately. And he said, if I don't hear from you, I'm calling you tomorrow. So the EMT's got me in the car, made sure my seatbelt was fastened, asked me if my mirrors were okay, if I could see everything okay. And I said, it's not my head that hurts, it's my bottom. And I don't drive with it very often, so I think I'll be fine. So they said, okay, well, we're going to follow you a little ways and make sure you're okay. So they did. They followed me for a couple of blocks. And I got home, and of course, my granddaughter had fit. She said, you needed to go to the hospital and see if you had any broken bones. I said, I know I don't. You don't walk around with broken bones. But anyway, to make a long story short, nobody could have been treated with greater kindness and respect. And the next day, the gentleman from the city called me to make sure that I was all right. And I just want y'all to know, I didn't come here to gripe tonight. I came here to tell you that Victoria has the best people in the world working for them, and thank you all for all you do for the citizens of Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Appreciate you taking the time to come share that with us. And appreciate what you do in the community. I know you've had a lot of years of involvement. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to share that with us. It does mean a lot. Okay, citizens communication still open.
Hello, Mayor, council. My name is Jill Trevino, and one of the items in the agenda packet tonight is to review the appointments for the Parks Commission. So I wanted to let you know that for the past two or three years, I've been serving on the Planning Commission, and that has been one of the most rewarding experiences that I've had, both personally and professionally. So I would really appreciate your consideration for the Parks Commission. Having a background in civil engineering, a lot of the work that I've done has been in utilizing floodplain areas and creek areas to use for recreational parks and amenities. And Victoria has done a phenomenal job of doing that within parks. You see that with the Lone Tree Creek Trails. You see that in Riverside, and that's something that's very important. And I would love the opportunity to serve on the commission to help, you know, be instrumental in making those decisions as well. Now that said, a good friend of mine, Gloria Rodriguez, is also here, and she is in the packet. So I also just wanted to throw a lot of support behind Gloria, as well as there are three openings, although I think two people are going for reappointment. So just also throwing support her way, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Thank you for your service on Planning Commission.
Good evening, mayor, councilmen, councilwomen. I am Gloria Rodriguez, as Jill so kindly introduced me. And thank you so much, Jill, for your kind words. I am also applying for the appointment of the Commission for the Parks and Rec. I work at Habitat for Humanity here in Victoria, and I moved from Rockport. I formed the Victoria Outdoor Women's Club because being outdoors is a passion of mine. I spend a lot of time in the parks here with my stepkids, by myself, with my dog. And serving my community has always been one of the most important things that I've done my entire life. It's something my grandparents instilled in me, you know, be a good neighbor, serve your people. So I just want to say that if I were to get appointed, I would do my very best job and would love to be a part of it. So thank you for considering me. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Howard Motall. If you recall, I spoke to you, addressed you all about two weeks ago. This is a little bit more brief. Since my time is running, I'm going to get after it. So like I said before at the last meeting, I addressed you, I'd come to an agreement with code enforcement officer Andrea Yala that I was going to erect a fence, put up a fence, and put my stuff behind it that they considered it to be junk. Now, I asked at that time, and it was made very clear, that the back fence line was not an issue, an issue. Andrea said, you can't see anything from that side, so there's no need to install a better fence. Now, I can't recall exactly, but in October or November of last year, my landlord got a court summons for April 26th. Now, fast forward to January, I ran into a city official at Home Depot. It turns out, they were buying fencing material just like I was. Now, they were going to first den, rebuild their fence that got blown down in the hurricane. Now, that very day, I got a suggestion to put up the fence, put my stuff behind it, and then go to the prosecuting attorney asking for a compliance dismissal. I did just that. I did just that. I put the fence up, put my stuff behind it. A few days later, on January 11th, I got a call from the landlord, said they moved the court date up to January 18th, which was a week away. So on the 18th, I met with prosecuting attorney James Smith, asked for that compliance dismissal after showing him the pictures that I took just that morning. He seemed happy with it and granted the dismissal pending reinspection. Now, the next court date, he shows me pictures that were taken from Poly Street, which is where all the alleged issues were addressed from. Two of those pictures were of trees, and one was of a lagostrum shrub that Grace wanted me to trim, all the branches from the ground all the way up to seven feet, according to a tree trimming mandate that the code has. Now, the next pictures I was shown was where she had gone around the other side of the block, where Andrea said there was no issue. She traveled about 100 feet onto private property to position herself on a fence line, peering through shrubs and tree branches to take pictures of the backside of my property, again describing it as junk and tall grass. She also took pictures of a shrub line that was on the adjacent property that belongs to my landlord, that has native grasses underneath some lower limbs of a shrub that I use in aid of the privacy effect of those shrubs. She positioned herself on my landlord's land when she took that picture. Now, I pointed that out, that she was trespassing, and showed that on a map to the prosecuting attorney about where exactly she was positioned. He ends that meeting, sets another court date, and I asked for copies of those pictures and all the paperwork from that meeting. He assured me I'd get them emailed to me. I still haven't received anything. Now, the next day, I went out, and I put up no trespassing signs. Also took my lion trimmer, went to my back light, cut down all the grass that you might consider to be tall. It was nothing left. It was barren. Two weeks after that, I noticed that shrub line where she took the pictures had all the grass cut out from underneath it, and the shrubs were thinned out. About half of the limbs from those shrubs were removed. Now, this whole lot that's around these shrubs is maintained. The grass is cut. It remains cut. Now, I spoke with the neighbor lady. She informed me that she witnessed and spoke to two city employees that drove past those no trespassing signs, cut my grass, and thinned out those shrubs. Now, why did they only thin them out when, you know, what she was trying to say, that those particular shrubs need to be trimmed from the ground up seven feet? Now, I think code enforcement overstepped their bounds there. Now, fast forward about a month after that last court date, and a meeting with prosecuting attorney again, he practically, or shows me practically the same pictures taken from that same, almost the same spot where Grace says she had gotten permission. She said she got permission this time from the property owner. Now, I asked him to set another court date so I could consult an attorney, and he denied it. He gave me two options. He said, you either take it to jury trial or accept a no contest plea deal, where I pay a $287 fine, agree to continue to make improvements, and don't get into a non-compliance for 12 months. For this, code enforcement will drop all other cases and will not pursue this any further. So I bring it to his attention. I said, Grace has got a personal grudge interest in this. She's not going to let this go. He assured me that he will not pursue this and anything else, and this will be the end of it. Now, I don't want to pay a fine that I feel I don't owe, but I don't want to drag my property owner into a court trial. So I accepted plea deal, and that was supposed to be the end of it. The next day, I noticed the neighbor is there, so I go and have a talk with him. But first, I go to the other neighbor to use as a translator because the property owner doesn't speak English very well, and I don't speak Spanish. But through that conversation, he stated he did not give Grace permission to access his property and approach that fence line to take pictures. Counsel, I know I'm through, I mean, with the time. Will you give me another 30 seconds to finish this paragraph? Okay. He gave her permission to take pictures of his mess that was on his property, created by his tenants, which was viewable and evident from the sidewalk, which is a public area. Now, I feel Grace misled, if not outright tricked, this gentleman in order to gain access to his property to take pictures of mine. Now, two weeks later, my landlord received a bill from code enforcement for $359 for trimming that grass underneath the shrubs on that adjacent property. Now, according to this plea deal, this was supposed to be taken care of. That's my dilemma. That's my issue. I hope somebody gets something investigated here. Mr. Delagars, I'm going to text him or give him some of my information since he's representing the district that I'm from. And if anybody else wants to communicate me, if you just get that information from Mr. Delagars, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Motall.
Thomas, I believe this case is in the municipal court.
Yes.
Arena.
It was. I'm not sure of its current status. I can certainly look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to come forward and talk about anything at all? All right, seeing no one get up, we'll close citizens communication, move into the rest of our agenda. Agenda, excuse me. We have a consent agenda?
Sure. We have six items on our consent agenda tonight. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the special meeting on August 28th, 2018, the regular meeting of September 4th, 2018, and the special meeting of September 6th, 2018. Second, an ordinance amending the 27, 2018 City of Victoria General Fund and VES Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $598,334 for the replacement of a pumper truck for the fire department, providing for savings and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate lease and professional services agreement with the South Texas Zoological Society Incorporated for the management of the Texas Zoo in the amount of $125,000 and declaring an effective date. Fourth, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a promotion services agreement with the Victoria Main Street Program in the amount of $75,000 and declaring an effective date. Fifth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Motorola Solutions for maintenance and scheduled upgrades to the 800 megahertz radio system in the amount of $386,669.04 for fiscal year 2018-2019 and declaring an effective date. And sixth is a resolution awarding the Riverside Duck Pond Sidewalk Repair and Golf Course Pump Station Repair Project to Keith Staff, doing business as Staff Concrete Construction of Victoria, Texas, for his low bid of $80,735.50, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, all items passed. E1.
E1, Mayor, is a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the Parks Commission and declaring an effective date. And Mayor and council members, we have a large number of applicants for these three spots that are on the ballot. The resolution, as you see in your packet, has three blanks in it, so we will need to fill those in with our normal voting process. The mayor and I talked about our process this morning, and I'd like to recommend one change to the way we normally do this process. We will still go through a balloting process for each individual position. One at a time, we'll take first nominations for the first slot, second nominations for the second slot. But because we have so many, we have 10 applicants for those slots, we'd like to approve those based on a plurality of positions rather than requiring a simple majority. What that would mean is when we go on the first ballot and there are 10 applicants, if one applicant gets three votes, another applicant gets two votes, and then the other two votes are one each for other applicants, we would go ahead and put that nominee in the resolution, even though that's not a complete majority. It would avoid us having to go through runoffs where we clearly can tell who has gotten the highest number of votes in that situation. So unless there's an objection to that method, I think it would streamline the process tonight. All right, seeing no objection, we'll move forward with that. There are three different slots, and so as I pass out ballots tonight, I'm going to ask you to put first, at the top of the ballot, a number one. We will be nominating for the first slot of the three. I will remind the public, as I always do, that the city does not engage in secret ballots. These ballots will be available in the city secretary's office. We use this process just to streamline the nominations. If anyone's interested in how individual council members vote, they are putting their names on their ballots right now, and you can get those from the city secretary. When you get finished circling one name, you can return your ballot to me. The city secretary and I will tally them, and I'll announce the results.
It's encouraging to see this many people willing to serve their country. This is probably one of the bigger ones we've had in a while.
This is, yes, we knew this could take a while. We have actually a tie for the highest number of vote getters. So Gloria and Jill each received three votes, and Jesse Olivares, did I say that right? I'm sorry. Yes, received one vote. And so we will now have a runoff for the first slot. So this time, when I pass the ballots around.
Is it agreeable to disuse all three of those people? We have three slots?
Agreeable to me.
You too. Is that within our prerogative?
Absolutely.
I'm good with that.
I mean, I'm pretty sure those first two names, the two young ladies, okay.
And so you do that instead of reappointing the two that have to be reappointed?
Do we need a motion to discuss what is brought up? We can still vote.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what was asked on that side.
Do we need, can we get a motion to discuss? Can we change names if we want to vote again or anything after the motion?
I think that we need a motion to move forward, and so I think Mr. Bultnait is about to make a motion to put those three names into the blanks, and then if there's further discussion, that motion could be amended in any way.
Okay. Or we can just talk about it now.
Or we can just talk about it now.
If there's no objections. Ms. Scott.
I was just wanting to clarify that that's what we were saying, that that would, those would be the three nominations as opposed to the folks that have been serving that asked for reappointment. Just wanted clarification.
And that's my understanding of the effect of that, is that we would be nominating those three and not reappointing the person who's currently serving on the board.
It has been obvious to me that there's a lot of interest in a lot of different people that like to serve, and it helps to rotate them off occasionally. That's all. I don't, nothing certainly negative about anyone who's currently served or has in the past. It's just an opportunity for others. That's all. Is that okay? I mean, I don't know if you were looking for any response from any of us.
I think it's okay.
So we could accept a motion at this point.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Jesse Olivares, Gloria Rodriguez, and Jill Trevino to the Parks Commission.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Mayor, before we vote, I'm sorry. I want clarification. I want everyone to understand that that is a motion to approve the resolution in front of you, not just to put the names in the blank so we don't have to do a second vote. Sorry. Go right ahead. I'm sorry. Now you can take your.
That's okay. I think we did vote, but we'll do it again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay.
I'm sure the ladies who came down this evening don't mind getting voted twice.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for both taking the time to be here tonight.
All right, E2 is a resolution reappointing the municipal court judge and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and as I understand it, she's done a wonderful job. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and as I understand it, she's done a wonderful job. I, I reached out to Vanessa last week, but I didn't hear back from her. Just wanted to tell her how much we appreciate the work she's doing. So I'll try to give her a call again later, so. All right, any further discussion?
May I ask for clarification? It's not part of this resolution, but also entitlement to a 3% pay raise as the other... She's y'all's appointee, so y'all have got to discuss whether you wish to do a pay raise with her.
Yes, yes, and I certainly feel that's appropriate to just include her in the 3% that we gave to all employees. I, I don't see any objection to that, so.
So do we need to do an amendment?
No, ma'am, that's just a clarification on a, on a staffing issue. We're okay with that.
Very good, very good. No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, E3.
E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept federal assistance from the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service in the amount of $1,943,620.75, of which the city will be obligated to participate with approximately $295,199.75 to repair both the riverbank in Riverside Park and river pump station damaged by Hurricane Harvey, and if awarded, authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with NCRS and declaring an effective date.
Come on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in the event that we don't get this federal assistance, the damage will not be taken care of? The river's gonna stay the same, everything?
They're gonna, they're gonna work on that erosion area. You know, we're right across from the duck pond where that has come out, so their intent is to fix that issue. So Doll may explain exactly what they're gonna do, but...
Actually, I was gonna say that Ken Gill has done a wonderful job of leading the charge on this project. So I'm gonna ask him to come up and help explain.
But they do plan to fix that area there, yes.
In spite of the fact that we don't get the, the grant, we still gonna have to fix that area about the duck pond, right?
That, that would be something up to council to decide, but we're, we're applying for the NRCS for assistance to correct some of that erosion.
Would it come back as a CIP, or is it sufficient, I mean, is the damage gonna be that much that we would have to put it on a CIP list?
Now, if we get the grant, Kent, I don't mean to speak for you, but you've been working with NCRS on estimating what it's gonna cost and what they're gonna do, so we believe that's a good estimate.
Yes, and we're working right now with a consultant that, that's looking at some preliminary ideas and some preliminary plans to digress those issues, and they're, they have these numbers, and they're working with those numbers to get some ideas of how to do a more of a permanent correction to those erosion areas in the park and as well as at the pump station.
If for some reason we don't get the grant, but I think that they kind of feel like pretty confident that we will get the grant, if for some reason we don't, yes, ma'am, it's gonna have to come back as a CIP project because we're gonna need to fix that erosion.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it's not going to just not be done.
Yes, yeah.
If we do get the grant, is the, is the city's contribution already in the budget?
No.
No, so that, that would come back for amendment?
Okay.
Can you see the damage to the pump station from the road?
No, you cannot. It's, it's up, it's actually against the river. When the, the pump station is, right now is far enough away, but it's, as the river starts moving and changing, that's what we're trying to eliminate, is trying to avoid, is having to get close to that actual pump station.
Well, the two near the duck pond and the golf course are highly visible.
They're visible.
But I, I didn't think you could get down there. Brush is too thick, is that correct?
Excuse me?
The brush is too thick at the pump station?
It's very thick down there. You can get back there, but you have to get, of course, get access through the gate, and then you have to walk behind the pump station to the river.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grammar Medical Correction for 8A, if we can fix that on the contract.
In 8A?
There's just a misspelling.
Sure, I'll look at that, thank you.
I didn't want to be grammar guy.
Yeah, no, good job.
Never mind that.
Very good. I, I heard the word I was gonna ask, and I was gonna ask if we're confident, reasonably confident we'll get this, and I think that was the word you used, Ms. Garrett, so fingers crossed.
Mm-hmm. I, I believe so. We were one of the first ones to call right after the hurricane, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Things move slowly. Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay. Did you find your correction?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be sure to pass that along. E4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to Maintenance and Support Contract with Tyler Technologies to modify fees and to decrease the rate of increase for the upcoming renewal term and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same? Okay, item passes E5.
Item E5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an unimproved property contract for the purchase of a 5.65 acre tract of real estate from the JW and D. O. Bray Children's Limited Partnership and declaring an effective date. Mayor and council, once we get a motion on the floor, I will be asking for an amendment, as I've discussed with you guys, to, to change the effective date of the contract that's going to be executed.
Make a motion to approve, approve item E5.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Make a motion to amend the resolution to provide, or to change it to read with an effective date of September 17th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt and a second, then a motion to amend. Any questions on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. Now, any discussion on the, the item as it amended? Seeing none? And this wasn't an easy task, was it? It was, it looks like we got it done, so, thank you, staff.
Took us a year.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item passes. So we do have an executive session. We will have no further business after that, as I understand it?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll, we'll adjourn into executive session.
The city council will recess for executive session unless the 18th day of September 2018 at 5:35 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code Section 551.07 Forward with regard to personnel matters included and not limited to the municipal court judge, and Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with the third party. Thank you.